The following program is sponsored by The Greek, Ely's Radio Shack Dealer, at 570 Altman in downtown Ely, and brought to you as a public service by Georgetown Media in Ely, Nevada. White Pine County Commission Meeting, June 22, 2022.
Second regular scheduled meeting of the White Pine County Commission. The first item is, as normal, we take a moment of silence for meditation and prayer. Welcome to meeting. I went out of order a little bit. We should have done the Pledge of Allegiance first, but we will stand now, and please join us in the pledge.
And James Hutchins.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. The first item on the agenda today is public comment. Is there any on the phone, Mike PC? Anybody on the phone with public comment? Hearing none, I'll look to the audience. Anyone in the audience, please come forward, state your name.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
I have two things I wanted to mention. One is on the senior center. I was just talking with Lori, and after almost three years of trying project, we should be, Catherine and I should be able to get the grant closed out on that this week. It's been a lot of work, but we're almost, almost to the finish line there. The other item is on page four, C3D, about the office relocation plan. Mike let me know that this is going to go on the agenda this week, and I just wanted to let you know that myself and my entire office is again moving our office into the old courthouse. As you know, the original plan is to build a community services building, then those three offices from the admin building, and these two offices from the courthouse into the admin building, and then completely renovate the courthouse. Understandably that that has to not take place at this time, but my suggestion would be just take a breath, pause, wait a year. We're going into a recession, construction costs will go down, we can save more money. I understand there is definite need to move some offices where, you know, Mike, he just doesn't have any space there. I understand that, but we don't need to move more people than necessary. One of the old things of us saying is this building is not adequate, and there's a lot of issues with it, so why are we quitting people from good buildings into bad buildings? So I just wanted to, I'm sure we'll get into this more later, but I just wanted to let you know of public comment. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience that would like to speak to public comment right now? Please come forward and state your name.
Chris Maitius with the McGill Town Council. I'm going to be the liaison with the White Pine County Commission, and I just wanted to know, who is our liaison for the, from the county commissioners?
Can I answer that? As we, we've hired a county manager. I was the liaison, but everything goes through the county manager, so I think anything the McGill Town Council has to do, they should go to Mr. Weevil first, as their first thought, and then Mr. Weevil will get a hold of myself or anybody else if necessary, but most of the stuff can be handled through his office, so that would be your first, that would be first item of communication.
Okay.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak during public comment? Please come forward, state your name.
Good morning. Ruby Herden, McGill resident. I'm representing the Shell Razor Festival. That Shell Razor is spelled like the Shell Creek Range in Shellborn, not seashells. Anyway, I just wanted to thank everyone at the county level for all their help in making this first year a successful event. I wanted to thank Commissioner Wallace in his capacity as someone who loves music as much as I do. I wanted to thank Sheriff Penroy. Wanted to thank Kristi Rositch with the Aquatic Center, and most of all, I warned him that I might embarrass him. I don't see him here. From the bottom of my heart, I want to thank Bill Calderwood and the Maintenance Department. Bill was an absolute joy to work with. I might be exaggerating here, but I believe he began just about every single sentence and ended every single sentence with the words, "What can we do to help you?" And that perspective is so refreshing. Bill was an absolute joy to work with. I wanted you all to know that. Whatever you're paying him, it's not enough money.
Uh-oh.
Yeah. This is just a joke, I'm not being serious, but I, I, I think I told him, I'd start picketing, you know, White Pine County unfair to Bill Calderwood if you don't give him a ring. So that's a joke, I'm not being serious, but anyway. Again, thank you to everyone at the county level for your help. We will be back same weekend next year at the McGill Pool Park, June 1st through 3rd. We're scaling back from four days to three, but we're adding a second stage, so we'll have just about as many bands. We'll have authors' readings, we'll have drive-in movie screenings at my private campground north of McGill. We're planning to bring in more food vendors and local vendors hopefully selling their wares. And that's just about it. I just wanted to say thank you to everyone.
Thank you to you, Ruby.
Thank you.
That is your baby.
On behalf of this commission, that you're making, putting White Pine County on the map in a positive way. Thank you very much.
Oh, and one thing I have to say is, we had bands from pretty much all over the US, one band from Canada. Thirty bands. You'd think some of them might have errors about them, but they were all just delightful people, so easy to work with, and they love Ely, McGill, White Pine County. Some of them didn't know what to expect coming here. They were just blown away by how beautiful the McGill Pool Park is. They think it's a wonderful venue. One of them actually compared the pool park to a really neat place in Martha, Texas, which was kind of my model for this festival in the first place. So that, I was very flattered by that, but all the bands had a great time. Some of them got to hang out at the Drugstore Museum in McGill, others were at the McGill Club. I have to give a shout out to the Prospector Inn. Most of the bands were booked there, and the Roywitz were fantastic to work with. Look forward to working with them in the future. And yeah, the bands just love the Prospector, they love Ely, McGill. Many of them cannot wait to come back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment on the phone right now? I have a public comment, it's okay. Jason, can you come up and introduce yourself?
Oh, sure.
And tell the board a little about yourself and what you're doing here.
Sure, yeah. Hello, I'm Jason Hutchins. I've met most of you, I think, already. I'm the new IT engineer for the county, and I come from Traverse City, Michigan. I've got a kind of a long history of a variety of work, specifically in security and compliance, and I'm just excited to be here. It's a beautiful community, and I look forward to working with you all.
Very glad to have you.
Absent Captain Swedich is a resident for his hair, which I fully support. Very welcome to here and very well attended, so his expertise is unmatched, so I'm happy to have him here. Starting yesterday.
Awesome.
That's great. That's very welcome. Any other public comment? George?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I attended the Regional Planning Commission meeting held on June 15, 2022. That commission has not followed its own written procedures and guidelines, I've told you that before. They approved the home occupation without proof that the person owned the property or that had permission from the owner to conduct business. The sidewalk in that area is blocked by bushes or non-existent. No ADA access, no proof or credentials that the person was educated, qualified, or certified to conduct the type of business that they were offering. Mr. Chairman, the, that commission next considered changing zoning for an area in which none of the property owners had made a request. The majority attended, the majority of the property owners attended the meeting and protested any change. There was no city or county government official request for any zone change. Those people are not elected. They don't have expertise, you need to get rid of... Mr. Chairman, that meeting held on May 18, 2022, they approved the variance for a property on Fay Avenue. In looking at the property in the back, in the alley, was blocked. I asked if the alley had been abandoned, if so, when, or was it just a temporary thing? I want to remind you, NRS forbids the blocking of a public accessway. It is a fire issue. No response to date. That board again, needs better qualification. Mr. Chairman, on your agenda item 2C4A, you're to consider alternatives for some of the American Rescue Funds. I want to remind you, property owners need to be considered for loss of income from rentals when their renters couldn't or wouldn't pay their rent. They're still waiting out there, they need assistance. Create a victims fund to make sure those that have been harmed financially are made whole. How many times have I got to tell you that? Mr. Chairman, on your agenda item 2C4G, that item needs to be denied. Consultants such as Lewis have stated to fill it within your community first, before expanding out of your footprint. We don't need a predator's park near a drug stop. That area needs to be developed for housing. There are sufficient parks now. Let me remind you, developers need to address all impacts, not the county. I want to remind you, there's still no proper ADA access at the Justice Center. The agenda item 2C3C, this county should not compete against the private sector. I'm not allowed to rent my property as others do. On the agenda item 2C4D, there was nothing in the pack, in the packet for the public to review. Need the full packet, folks. On your agenda 1B1, there's not a map to indicate the location of the proposed monument in Spring Valley. We should have an idea where it's at. I don't know if it's in the middle of the Winfield Farm or by Major's Place. I'm not against it, but if we have any kind of growth and we put this out there, we need to be able to tell people, you have to be careful with that particular situation. You're not doing it.
Well, your three minutes are up, we'll be addressing that.
You know, something, you're gonna wish you didn't have that three-minute rule, and I'm gonna be there to remind you.
Okay, but we have to know.
Remember when, don't do it again.
Excellent.
I need some answers.
Okay. I'm gonna ask for public comment one more time. On the phone, anybody on the phone with public comment? Anybody in the audience that hasn't been heard? No one? Hearing none? We'll shut down public comment, and we'll open the county commission meeting, and as we open it up to page two, item one, is the county commission. As you all are aware, today is my last day, or I will be removed or replaced during this meeting, during this next comment. So, with that being said, I'm gonna open up item number one, which is discussion for possible action, the approval to select the commission chairman for the remainder of 2022. I spoke yesterday with Vice Chairman Godon, because I haven't been able to reach him for a couple of days, but I did finally get a hold of him yesterday to see, he is the vice chair, he has been the vice chair for the past three years, since he's been elected. He said he would do it, but it was at the discretion of the board, he had no problem that they didn't want to select him, but under normal circumstances, the regular chain of command from the president on down is when you replace the next person, the vice chair usually moves in. We have this item on here today to select a new county commission chairman, effective immediately. So, that being said, and that, that comment being made, I would like to, right now, can I do this? Can I make a motion to appoint Travis Godon? Then I would make a motion to appoint Travis Godon as the new chairman for the remainder of this year, and I would ask for a second. Do I have a second?
You have a second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion on this item? Hearing none? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? None. Motion passed as unanimous, but Travis is the new chairman of the county commission for the remainder of this year. I will make this statement right now before we go to the next item, and that is that Travis is out of the office today, he'll be back on Monday, so the vice chair that we're going to be doing next will take over the meeting and proceed with the being named the vice chairman for the remainder of 2022, replacing Travis. It's been my pleasure to serve this board for five and a half years as the chairman, but it's just time for me to move on. So, that being said, Travis is the new chairman. By unanimous this vote. Item number two is discussion for possible action, the approval to select a commission vice chairman for the remainder of 2022. The vice chairmanship is vacant, so we would, I would ask this commission, if they have a preference of one of the members, to be Travis's assistant. Is there anybody there who'd like to do it?
Make a motion to select Lori, I'm sorry, the vice chair.
Okay.
If she's up for it.
Are you up for that?
I would second that.
Thank you.
We have a motion by Ian and a second by Jane. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? None. So, chair, chairman, vice chairman for the remainder of this year will be Lori Carson, effective immediately. She'll take over this meeting and continue on with the meeting for the rest of time. Thank you for your years, and thank you for allowing me to serve in this capacity. I'll still be the county commission, county commissioner, but I won't be in this capacity. So at this moment, I'll move. You just want to stay where you're at and take, take a little piece there?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll stay right where we're at. The new chairman? Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you for the public comments, I appreciate that.
You gotta carry that with you.
All right. Okay, we'll go to our 9:05, the Swamp Cedars National Monument, approval of a letter of support for the Swamp Cedars Bashan Wabi. I'm probably saying that wrong. National Monument in Spring Valley. And I see Rick Spillsbury here, so.
Yep, I'm Rick Spillsbury, an elder with the Ely Shoshone Tribe, and I'm here for Mom, Delane Spillsbury, who is the representative for the tribe for this project. And she's unavailable today because she's been spending the past week in the hospital. The good news is, she's looking pretty good. I think she's gonna be out pretty soon, and we'll probably be able to get back to living her regular life again. So, I just wanted to say thank you to the Grand County Commission, Grand County, oh wait, Grand County, guess she gets where I'm from. I wanted to say thank you for all the support that you've given to us for the past few years protecting Spring Valley. It's been a lot of work out there trying to see that the place still remains a decent place to visit. And I just wanted to say thank you on that, in that respect, and your support is a great base of modern work and such. This is very important to my mom, I believe that's probably on top of her bucket list, and it's important to the tribe too, because it's, this is a very important place to us historically. It's probably the most important historical thing that happened to our tribe. And it's also, well, it's also a cemetery for a whole lot of members of our tribe. It's a place that we can go, and we can reflect on our history, and other people can too. Obviously, there are people who wanna, wanna find it in a place of significant religious importance. And what we're trying to get support for is actually significantly less than 1% of Spring Valley, and it's all on BLM land. And I think that it is a good thing for the county, and it, it is a significant way to remember everything that has historically happened in this area. And I think that a lot of people in the world, they want to know about these things. And I'm sure would greatly appreciate your support, and I, if you have any questions?
Does the board have any questions?
I think that we kind of left out Monte Sanford as the PhD. He should be interviewed.
Yeah. This is Monte Sanford, he's been helping us out, and has made quite a bit of success in what we've already achieved, and it looks like there's a, I'll do it, just go ahead.
Yeah, my name is Monte Sanford. I work with the three tribes, Gocheats, Duckwater, and Ely. And I'm kind of heading up the National Monument effort out there at Swamp Cedars, and working a lot with Rick and Delane and other tribal council, tribal council members from the three tribes. So we're here today to ask for a letter of support from the, from the commission to support the effort. I'm happy to take any questions that you, that you may have.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Wait a second, I have, I have some questions. First off, I think that this is something that we should have run by our Natural Resource Advisory Committee. Second, I personally don't know enough about it yet. I, I read the bill draft, but there's nothing in there so far as maps. I had heard, and I don't know if it's a wild rumor on the street, that it's approximately 27,000 acres.
That's correct.
So that's quite a bit, and I'd like to see the boundaries of that, so doing due diligence, I think that it might be appropriate to table this and...
What's your time period that you would need a letter of support? You know, I think within the month would be, would be nice.
That would be good, then.
Would we be able to do a support in concept? Like, in other words, we support the idea of what they're trying to do, but details would kind of need to be appropriate.
I don't, we don't know what the details are. Like I said, I had heard that it was 27,000 acres, and that's quite a bit, and I'd like to know where it goes.
It doesn't feel like there's a problem supporting the project.
No, I think it's great.
We just need to, we have that Resource Advisory Committee, that Resource Advisory Committee, and they're, they're supposed to be our experts that advise us and point out good things and bad things, and things we should consider, and how to draft that letter. And so, I think what our vice chairman is saying is that we should take it to them, let's present to the Natural Resource Advisory Committee, and then they'll make a recommendation and findings to this board, and then we'll come back on the subsequent agenda after that meeting, or, or issuing of that letter, if that's our board.
And I know this isn't a map, but it's just north of the Win Farm.
North of the Win Farm. So, there's part of it arranged.
And mining, and, yeah, I just, rather than jumping.
Good call.
That, that way the public knows also where the boundaries are, and that way you might get more support when it's more articulated.
Sure.
So if there's a motion to table?
Motion to table.
Second.
You're gonna have to hold on to do that.
Yeah. I know, I get to move in two seconds.
Is there any further discussion? All right, is, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our 9:15 Road Commission, we'll go ahead and we'll close the Record Commission and open up the Road Commission. First on the agenda is discussion update on primary and secondary roads within White Pine County and county facilities, completed and future projects, communications with corporations and governmental agencies. Martin Terrell, Road Lead Supervisor.
Okay, so road maintenance activities between April 19th and May 12th, 2022, road maintenance on standard county roads, WP10, the Cove Road, WP12, Mindump Road, roads within the Run pound truck, WP64, Ward Mine, and WP28, Bench Road, and the Cape Valley Road, WP45. WP45, we began, we began applying magnesium chloride. WP28, the Bench Road, is complete with mag chloride. We completed an oil stabilization on 1.6 miles of County Road 212 north between Highway 93 and the Cross Timbers area. We also completed a double chip seal on that same road, it's 1.6 miles. So just to note, that road now is, is complete with a chip seal surface from end to end on that road.
Awesome.
We've completed a 3/8 inch chip seal on WP52, Laffawanna Road, between State Route 490 and Crawford Street, the city of Ely. We completed 3/8 inch chip seal on the Georgetown Ranch Road. Again, we re-chipped it. And then, of course, we swept all those, all those roads, 212 north, Laffawanna, and Georgetown in preparation for fog sealing, those, those chip seals, which the time of the agenda was not complete, but as of now, they are complete. We placed asphalt between the edge of Juniper Street and the new mailboxes up in the town side of Ruth, and received permission from the BLM to access material from the Baker Community gravel pit down in Baker for some road repairs down there. The new road assistance agreement pending with Ken Ross Mine is waiting for language to be added, requested by White Pine County, concerning minor county road WP1000, referred to as the Jeds Access Road. So we're waiting for the, for Ken Ross to add that language and sign it, so we can bring it back to the commission for approval. And the city of Ely owes White Pine County nine hours in the county-city assistance agreement, which is minus 25 hours from the last report. Any questions?
I'd just like to make a statement. These, these road stabilizations with this oil treatment and the chips, if you remember what these roads were like before, you know, just probably the most traveled stretch of gravel road in White Pine County is that Georgetown Ranch Road. And we remember what that was, just a gravel file with dust clouds, and you drive that road now, and it's as nice as any paved road in the area. And I, I'd like to commend Martin, because that, that was kind of his brainchild, was to utilize this new system. And the improvements that it's allowed on, us to have on our streets, in, in the county and in the city as well, has really made a change in the lives for, for people, so thank you. Thank you.
The pictures are a nice touch, too. I always like to see the forensics. Okay, thank you, Martin. We'll go to number two, discussion for possible action, approval of the minutes from the following Road Commission meetings, May 11th, which I think C came in there? I guess I didn't. It's not on my iPad. Okay, so I didn't read it. I did make my checklist in there. Does anybody have?
I, I do have May 11th in the backup. That's true.
Sounds so weird. You can just call.
Madam.
Madam Guy's chair. Oh my goodness. Okay. I had a discussion with Nicole in regards to some kind of clarification on number, on May 25th. So I've gotten that squared away, it was just kind of worrying. Anyhow, motion to approve?
Salute.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Okay, we're on time, just back here for item D, 930, Natural Resource Discussion. Item one, discussion regarding White Pine County Natural Resource and Public Lands Issue Tracking List, Jeremy Drew, Principal Resource Specialist, Resource Concepts. Jeremy, are you there?
Hi, I am, Mr. Vice Chair. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Right. I'm in the field today, so I apologize for any background noise, but congratulations on the new leadership position. Chairman, thank you for your service to the commission. Just a quick update today, not a lot has changed on our tracking list. Bald Mountain, Juniper Project, Pross High are both in cooperating agency status right now. You'll recall we derived scoping comments on both of those a couple months ago, or a month ago in one case, and that continues to move through the cooperating agency process. We don't anticipate any other public comment periods opening up between, between now and the end of the fiscal year on those. Martin mentioned quickly the realignment of County Road 1000 to improve public safety... safety and the maintenance agreement that goes with that. We continue to be in communications with KG Bald Mountain on the best way to approach that going forward in addition to the Juniper Project. Not a lot of other items to update the comment at this point. Obviously, we will add, per your last agenda item, the Spring Valley that monument onto our tracking list and work to prepare an agenda item for the committee, natural resource advisory committee on that. One other item to flag to the commission will be talked about at last week's natural resource advisory commission meeting, advisory committee meeting, excuse me, is that in working with the public land policy plan that was adopted by the county in twenty eighteen, the PLU Act prior had identified that we didn't have an energy section in that planner. At the time, the PLU Act had, had suggested that maybe we should move forward with development of an energy section, given all the transmission and renewable projects that are going on within the county. I think that's a good concept. We went over a plan that was developed in two thousand and ten for Lincoln County by the state land use planning committee of Skip Canfield, used to be a state land. I think that would serve as a good starting point for something for White Pine County and has a very similar format. And so the advisory committee's recommendation was to move forward with that and have us draft a task order amendment for technical support that would go before them at their next meeting. So I flagged that, commissioners, primarily to say that we will probably be coming back in July with the task order amendment in the new fiscal year to start working in more detail on that section. I think something like this dovetails in very nicely with where Manager Weeble's going in terms of some of the development agreements and special use permitting for renewable energy projects as well. So I think it all times out very well. And with that, Chair or Vice Chair Carson, I will break for any questions.
Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I do, because I wanna know with this new committee that you're forming, how much red tape and delay will that cause to LS Power, to pump storage, to all the other stuff? Because each layer of government you add just creates that much more of a problem. I understand those questions, but I also understand the red tape that comes whenever you start forming a new committee to add another layer of government on to something else and then delay, delay, delay. And that's my primary question is, because I was, under the assumption there was a lot of opposition to what is potential, our pump storage facility, that we are unanimous in our support of that. So my, my question to you would be, how much of a delay when you start adding this new, new format, new government on to your proposals? I mean, I, I don't know why, I understand we need committees, but I don't understand why we need to form and start an action that might delay all, all of our projects.
And Jeremy, we'll go ahead and take this, because it was the county that formed the committee where we combined two rather, and into one. And County Manager Weeble, did you, you fit into some of those?
Yeah, no, it's, we, the natural resource advisory committee, because of the size of it and the diversity of those members, have a good constituency that, that's important to keep involved in these processes. What I have asked and talked to Jeremy about, Mr. Howe, is we need to update our plans, our county plans, to include our energy outlook, right? How we're gonna treat and handle energy development, because that's the future of White Pine County for economic development. The, the issue is that the natural resource advisory committee, Jeremy, are the experts on kind of some of the things they wanna see in there. And so they're gonna do the heavy lifting and then bring it to us to kind of play with and take apart. So it's not like we're forming more government, it's that they're gonna be doing the work to get that together for us so that we have it in our master plan. Because it's not, I don't have the expertise necessarily on energy or natural resources. I'm learning, and they'll bring it to us. And so that's all that I've asked them to do is to start getting that language and looking at Lincoln County's plans, some of the other plans, so we don't have to spend much time on it. It's not an extra layer that has to, for approval.
Just a research team.
Exactly. They're gonna be drafting it. It's still gotta come before us to get the special use permit and the development agreements. That's still something we're always gonna do. This is just a guidebook on our policy. So when this board's not here in four years, there's a policy in place that explains what priorities of this board and the county are.
Okay, that answered my question. I'll slide.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions? All right, Jeremy, wanna go ahead on to number two? Discussion action possible, or discussion for possible action, approval of three revised task order addendums, phase one for minor work, phase two for Bald Mountain Mine, and phase three for pump storage geotechnical, for RCI to end the fiscal year based on remaining budget and work to be completed. Jeremy Drew?
Yes, per record, Jeremy Drew, Vice Chair Carson. What we have before you is three task order revisions. For phase one, that's kind of our catch-all that, that covers us for meetings, coordination, advisor work requests. We're moving a little bit of money in from the pump storage geotech project to help cover us through the end of the year. Quite frankly, I don't think we'll actually use that entire budget, but it's there, some pops up here in the last week and a half or two weeks of the fiscal year. The second one for revised phase two on Bald Mountain. All that does is explicitly broaden the scope of work there to allow us to keep working on coordination as relates to White Pine one thousand and how we move forward with that in partnership with KG Bald Mountain. And then phase three, again, this is money that will be coming out of a program, programmatic task order we had for pump storage as related to their geotech study. I don't anticipate that we will have anything to review as relates to that between now and July first, so we just reprogrammed a thousand dollars into phase one. Overall, this does not exceed the allocated forty thousand annual budget. Again, I think we'll come in actually under the forty thousand dollar budget, and then we'll see you at the first meeting in July, what task orders to get started in the next fiscal year. Again, with that, I'll pause and be happy to answer any questions.
All right, did anybody have any questions to the revised task orders presented? Elizabeth, are you good? Yes. Anybody else? All right, I need a motion.
Motion to approve?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Jeremy.
Thank you, commissioners.
All right. We're too early for ten AM agenda, so we'll go ahead and move on to item two, page three, items from elected officials and department heads. Item A one, the county commission, discussion for possible action, approval to hold a special county commission meeting on the morning of June twenty-ninth at nine AM in the library conference room, and here a presentation from Matthew Lawton, Nevada State Demographer, to discuss his products and activities, or in the alternative, to select two commissioners to attend his presentation and report back to the commission at the next regular meeting. Who has this on the agenda that wanted to?
I think two, sorry.
Okay, the information is in the back of the tree.
Yeah, so we've been kind of doing, we've both been emailing James with the state demographer, I, I work with him. He's new in the last two, two years. It's from Carson.